City Council Committee on Public Works and Transportation will now come to order. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Counselor Dion?
Yeah.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yeah.
And Counselor Kadeen?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. First item on the agenda is citizen input. Madam Clerk, do we have any emails or citizen input that were submitted to us?
Yes, we do. We have one. This is submitted from, by Colin Dias, 560 Race Street. "Good afternoon, members of the Public Works and Transportation Committee. With the introduction of South Coast Rail to Fall River in the South Coast region, the residents of our great city deserve advocacy by our elected officials into assure South Coast Rail is properly implemented in our city. The residents deserve to know, number one, on the state website for South Coast Rail, there is said to be tree clearing because of the overgrowth on old rail lines. Can the project overseers of South Coast Rail assure that there will be no environmental concerns with South Coast Rail and to assure no habitats, flora, or fauna are displaced? Number two, has there been a study done to assure the South Coast Rail will not impede on job growth in Fall River? Number three, in terms of public safety, will there be any safeguards put in place to assure there will be no drug trafficking or any other illegal activity? On the issue of street lighting, I have noticed that the lights are dim throughout various areas of our community. I believe we should work with our utilities department to undim the lights. Thank you very much for your time, respectfully submitted, Colin Dias."
Thank you. That's all we have?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Item number two is a resolution to discuss with the South Coast Rail Project Manager to provide an overview of the construction necessary to bring South Coast Rail to Fall River. That was adopted on October 13th, 2020. That resolution was presented by Counselor Pereira and Counselor Kilby. I want to turn it over to the South Coast Rail team. We've got a number of individuals. So I'll turn it over to Jean Fox, who's the South Coast Rail Project Manager for, obviously, South Coast Rail and Mast DOT. First off, thank you for bringing the team and coming to meet with us and have a conversation about this very important project, which we've all been excited to see take shape and have been waiting for quite some time. So it's refreshing to have you here.
Thank you so much, Counselor. We're really happy to be here, too. So our project assistant, Joe, is going to drive the presentation. I have Nancy Farrell, who's been on my team forever from Regina Villa Associates. Kim Dobaz has also been very involved from the MBTA side of the house, so she knows this project backwards and forwards as, who did I miss? I got Nancy, I got, and Ken. Ken Caputo, who's with VHB, also been instrumental in a lot of the meetings that we've had in all the cities and all the communities as an engineer and an expert. So it's our pleasure to update you today on where we are, how we got here, and where we expect to go in the next several years. Next, please, Joe. So here's our sort of update. Phase one is still planned for the end of 2023, and it is fully funded. So when people get nervous about the MBTA's funding, I want to assure you, this is state funding, it's in our capital investment plan, it is committed to South Coast Rail. The Fall River construction was awarded to Skanska DW White. That was close to $159 million. That was the first award of the two major contracts for this project. The New Bedford Main Line and Middleborough Secondary, which includes the systems contract, went to the joint venture of South Coast Rail Constructors. That's Middlesex and Tudor Perini, and that one came in at $403.5 million. So we have a lot of construction dollars already out there on this project. And construction has begun on both lines. Early action work is complete. That included 46 culverts and a replacement of four railroad bridges. Next slide, please. And we also did some early demo, I'll tell you about in a little bit. So here's a map. The one on the left that has the red box around it shows you the area that we're working on right here. We are extending service that exists on the Middleborough Line now down to Taunton, Fall River, and New Bedford. That's phase one. So what you see here is where service roughly ended in Lakeville. We're moving down now to a new station in Middleborough. We're scooting over the Middleborough Secondary Line for a station in East Taunton. Then down on the Fall River Line, there's a station in a sonnet called the Freetown Station. It's up by the Mini Storage and the Amazon Parking. And then the Fall River Depot, which is at Pearson Deval. The New Bedford side of things is a little different. There's going to be one in the north end of the city and then one down near the ferry parking. Both, both of these have layover facilities. So, and that's required by Mast dot and the MBTA to have one as close to the end of the line as you can. We'll go over that in a little bit later in the presentation, but I do want to assure you, members of the City Council, that these are not maintenance facilities. These are where the trains park at night and take off in the morning. There's light maintenance, certainly, but major maintenance will be conducted elsewhere. So in terms of people hearing banging in the middle of the night, that would certainly not be the case. Next slide, please, Joe. Here's the early demolition contract. So we awarded $1.7 million to DW White. That's the accoutrement version of DW White. And that's done. We did a couple of sites in Fall River, one at the station site, Pearson Deval. And then there was a house in 2800 Block of North Main that's right near Weaver's Cove. Next slide, Joe. So here is the pieces of this contract, this piece that includes the city of Fall River. We have 12.1 miles of track, the two stations I mentioned, Freetown and Fall River Depot, the layover, which is at Weaver's Cove, we call it Weaver's Cove East. So we're not taking all of that property, we're taking the, it's more the northern end of it. 10 grade crossings, eight bridges, and 10 more culverts. Next slide, please, Joe. So the depot station is at 79 Deval. It's really close to where the station behind Kim was located. It includes a 730-foot high-level side platform, which means that you can get on any car from that platform. There'll be two canopies between Turner and Pierce Street, 220 vehicular parking places, 22 bike spaces, there's accessible parking and electric vehicle charging spaces. We also have an accessible drop-off pickup location and a bus drop. We've worked with SRTA to agree on a good bus drop-off on North Main. We also have covered benches, fair validators, trash recycling, storage, and utilities. Probably have a snowplow over there, who knows what we'll have. Next slide, please. And here's a, here's a rendering of what the station will look like. So this mirrors pretty much what all the MBTA stations look like, with the exception of South Station and North Station. They're, they're platforms and canopies, they're not big buildings, but they, they do allow for parking. Ridership is carefully studied so that when you make a station, you make it for what the central transportation planning staff agrees is appropriate. It also accounts for pedestrian and bike access and bus as well. Next slide, please. So here's a picture of the layout. It's kind of in two pieces, and the platform goes up a little bit. But it's exciting that we're also working closely with the Route 79 project, which is going to be a really great transformational project for the city, that area between Memorial, the Veterans Memorial Bridge, and where this spaghetti ramp project ended, because it ties in, our station ties into that. And then you'll have, in due time, a nice little boulevard and some nice developable properties, which will also be attractive to people wanting to grow and build business in the city. Next slide, please. Weaver. Hey, you see, it's, it's a set of six tracks. There's a crew building, it's a secured facility, there's no public parking there. Basically, again, the trains are parked there at night, they're cleaned out, might have brake checks, fueling, but that would be the sum total of what would be taking place there. The trains are off at night, they do not idle, they're plugged in in the winter months to keep the batteries and the engines warm so they can get up and go the next day. Next slide, Joe. Okay, again, so this is where we're going to store the trains overnight. It's going to serve this line. We do the light maintenance, as I said, the crew quarters and parking, no neighborhood parking, and it is fenced and secured. And that's actually a rendering of what a crew building looks like. It's, it's nothing really remarkable, fairly standard. Next slide, please. So tree clearing, which your public inquirer was asking about, we had to clear along the right-of-way, not just for construction, but for future operation. It's something that has to be done actually on a regular basis once commuter trains are rolling. Leaves on wet tracks cause slipping and potential derailments. You have line of sight issues. You have branches on tracks. We've seen a lot of that on the Green Line in the past. So this is, it's a safety issue more than anything else. It does not impact anyone beyond, if they're, if you're in the right-of-way, you'll notice it, but outside of that, it does not. We have survey work that's going along right now, actually, and we're moving soils, people may have seen some of that. Definitely a lot of environmental protection and site prep. It's important to note that this project went through an extensive environmental review process, and it has many environmental review safeguards. So if there's anything untoward that occurs, it will be reported and will be acted upon. Delivery of rails, rail and supplies along the right-of-way is already ongoing, and I just want to point out to all of you that the contractors are required to comply with the health and safety regulations that are in place for COVID-19. For the daytime work, construction is typically 7:00 AM to 3:30. However, when we get to things like those grade crossings, where we have to take the track out, we try to do those over a weekend, and they do operate a 24-hour period because the track has to be taken out and then replaced, so Mast Coastal can run their freight trains. Next slide, Joe. So again, prep of station layovers sites, that's ongoing now. At Weaver's Cove, I mentioned the earthwork, utility work, water sewer and drainage piping. The right-of-way will include, as I just mentioned, some track outages, pile driving, sometimes people hear that for the linear walls. Pre-construction pest and rodent management is required, and we did have some issues at Weaver's Cove, I'm sure you're all aware, with the displaced rats that were looking for a new home. That is, that's continuously monitored as the, is the dust. There are actually dust monitors placed around the site. I've heard it's not bad, the water trucks are working, but occasionally you get a little dust, but it gets much better. Next slide, please. So here's just some, some photographs, and then up here we have clearing and grubbing along the right-of-way. You can see they have some pretty elaborate machinery that goes along and clears the right-of-way. It's been overgrown for an awful long time. It was cleared, I want to say, five, six, maybe seven years ago for Mast Coastal, because they were having problems with line of sight. But the MBTA is very clear on what has to happen with vegetation near and on the right-of-way. And then the, the lower picture is the 80-foot lengths of rail that were delivered to Campinella Yard over there on a sonnet. And that's where a lot of, I think, in the future, the major maintenance will occur. Next slide, Joe. Here's some more photos. We have erosion protection. So those have to, after the clearing has happened, they go in behind the clearers and they put erosion controls in to keep everything from falling off and going where it shouldn't be. And now you're going to see on that picture on the right, 1,600-foot rails, very long pieces, long sticks. Next slide, please. Here's another picture of the offloading, it's just an enormous amount of rail. That's again happening at the Freetown Station. Next slide. And here's our schedule, and that big dot, that big star is still at the end of 2023. The whole last six to eight months will be doing, you'll see activity because of testing and commissioning, but right now we're going full-tilt boogie with the construction projects. So I think, go ahead, next slide, because I think I have my contact information. Oh, yeah, this is what I mentioned earlier before we were formally convened. We really do want people to sign up, we send out weekly notices, and this is what they look like, basically. They go out every week, and they tell you where the work is, what time it's happening, and if there's any traffic diversions that are going to take place, that's listed in the eBlast. Contact information is there. If there's other work going on, for example, in New Bedford, there was another project underway, and we were getting questions about it. So if there are other projects in the city, I'm going to need to have that contact information. I'm working very closely with the city on this, but we'll put that in our eBlast, too. Oh, by the way, there's another project going on here, not related to South Coast Rail, here's where you go for that information. Next slide, please. We do have a hotline installed, and it's getting utilized, and it is in the eBlast every week that goes out. So if people have any comments, questions, or concerns, they can call 774-762-7000. It's actually physically answered between 7:00 and 3:30, except holidays. Anything, any voicemails that are left outside of those hours will be taken up the very next day on that regular daytime shift, and we respond to every single call. We are available to meet with residents, as I did today, also with businesses, which we've done in the past. We've certainly briefed the chamber a number of times, and any elected official who wants to be updated and briefed, we're more than happy to talk to you, to set something up and work around your schedule to make that work for you. And of course, stakeholder meetings, as we discussed earlier, the Weaver's Cove Group was the area on North Main, they had some concerns, we set up a meeting, and it was a very helpful session for those residents. Next slide, please. And here we go. So project updates, mast.gov/southcoastrail. And then any comments or emails, we have our email address there, southcoastrail@dotstate.ma.us. And again, the construction hotline is 774-762-7000. But the website, we constantly update, we're being very vigilant on that, and it's going to require ongoing vigilance as this project really ramps up and things change almost daily. Next slide. That's it. Good. So questions and comments? I have my team here, we're happy to answer any questions.
Perfect, thank you. Any committee members have any questions for the, for the team here? Counselor Pelletier?
First of all, very impressive, and getting these reports every week is good as well. But that Weaver Cove, you, you guys took part of that?
Yep.
And what's left there?
So it's technically called in, at least we've been referring to it as Weaver's Cove South, so it's the part, we took, let me back up. There were metrics we had to abide by. We set up a bunch of metrics, and we were looking at all the different places to put a layover facility. The Weaver's Cove East, which is the more northern piece of it, met the metrics far better than the other, and it left that more waterfront property open for future development. It's, I don't know, Ken or Kim may have a better description of it, but we call it Weaver's Cove West, and it's a part with the tanks.
Yeah, it's, all the land that you guys have always referred to as Weaver's Cove, on the, between the track and the river, is still in, is still private land. We, we didn't acquire any of that land between the track and the river. It's, it's the portion of commonly held land that was between the track and North Main Street that was acquired.
Now, the railroad, would that affect the rest of Weaver Cove?
No, we don't go beyond the track that's out there today.
And that's it. And when we stopped this project, anyway?
Uh, 30 years ago.
About the same time that they did the Veterans Memorial Bridge.
Right! That's right!
So we, we see in '23 a completion?
The plan is to be done by the end of 2023, but be merciful on us if there's a little slippage. That's all I'm asking. If it is, we're, we have a very aggressive schedule with real milestones in all our contracts, so we're going to be watching it closely. That's the plan.
Now, how deep does the track go into Fall River?
It goes to the depot, Deval, and Pierce. This, phase one does not include Battleship Cove.
All right, now, Gold Medal Bakery.
Yeah, that's a spur.
Do they still, did we use the tracks?
That, that's a spur that wouldn't be on this line, and we've talked to them, too, about applying for an IRAP grant through Mast DOT, so they could develop the spur. And I know they submitted an application once, but it didn't get accepted, but I, I don't, and I don't know if they've resubmitted. The IRAP grants are now rolling again. That would be wonderful. When we met with them, I actually went to the plant, it's, it's a great business in the city, and they could get a lot more flour in if they didn't have to put it on trucks and on those tiny little residential roads and the school and everything that's there. So, you know, I'm hoping that they'll continue to pursue that, but that's a freight siding that they would, they would be pursuing.
Now, all the tracks now are no good, the ones that go to?
They're not utilized right now, no.
But that would have to be changed and pitched?
They'd have to be upgraded, absolutely. They'd have to meet all the standards, the ties there are gone. I don't think that the under, the ballast is in place, it really would need a lot of work.
Now, you said the, one of the rails is 1,600 feet long?
The pieces, one piece, the pieces are, are long pieces of rail. It's all continuously welded rail, we're replacing all the jointed rail that makes the trains go clickety-clack. So, and, and it's going to be good for freight, too. It's going to help them operate more efficiently.
Well, yeah, I got a, you know, good idea of what's going, going on now. It's nice that you come over and show us this tonight and all the reports, you can really keep up to it. And it takes in a lot of towns, cities as well. And, yeah, how far is it going to New Bedford? Just up to New Bedford?
How far down does it go? You know where the ferry parking is at Whale's Tooth?
No.
No? Okay, so that's down Route 18?
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Okay, it's right there.
Right there.
Doesn't go all the way down. It goes there, there is one at the north end.
Yeah. All right, well, like I said, I'm impressed you're doing very good work, so is everybody else. It certainly is good for the city. And it's even good for the landlords.
Yep.
They can rent their property, but the only problem is, where you're getting 600, 700, they're looking for 900 and 1,000 from these people coming in from Boston. And I got a friend of mine today that actually sold the house, he wanted $350,000 for it, and they ended up giving him another $10,000. But the prices of, of houses are going absolutely crazy. You got a six-unit that is probably worth $350,000, they're giving a half a million dollars for it. The only problem I got, are we going to squeeze out the people that don't have the money? That's the only thing. Practice is good?
That's extremely, extremely reasonable, that's a concern. And that really is something that I, I would absolutely hope that the City Council will take up, because zoning can help with that, too. There's no question, there's beautiful housing stock in the city. So if somebody from Boston or Boston suburbs says, oh, South Coast Rail is in, I can ride the train into the city and go to work now, let me see what there is for housing in Fall River, they're going to be amazed at what they can get and the price it is. So, yeah. And if I were a homeowner and I had this beautiful home, and I had this person from the Boston area who wanted to move there, and I could jack the price up, I certainly would. So that, that risk is there, but cities can be proactive and have been. I look at Lowell, Lowell is one of my prime examples of, sir, the city did gentrify, but they worked very diligently to make sure that, that people that might have been a little bit pushed out still had a place to live in, enjoy the city, and have access to all the amenities.
All right, that's all I got for this evening.
Well, it's great to see you, thank you.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you, Michelle, I see you. I just got one quick question before, before I forget. Jean, in, in the PowerPoint presentation, can you go back to the conceptual drawing you had for the parking lot and the stations?
Sure, there's Joe, Joe's driving. There, no, that's the layover, one more, I think.
Yeah.
There we go.
So just from my take, and I didn't realize there was going to be that many parking, you had just talked about building the facility based on usage. Can you share with us what we anticipate? And I know it's not exact, but what the daily ridership is expected to be?
And? Yes, I can.
Okay.
Total ridership was estimated for the whole line at another 1,600 people on top of what already goes out of Middleborough, which is a lot of Fall River people, by the way. Ridership for this station is around, it's just under 300. We've got 220 parking places here. We also have a lot of people that will come by bus, by foot, or by bike, and there's bicycle parking. We also know that the people in the northern end of town will probably go to a sonnet, where there's plenty of parking, that, because ridership out of a sonnet was only around 70, and there are over 100 spaces there. If we find that we can't adequately meet the needs of the ridership, the MBTA will have to go back and revisit that, because originally with the full build, our ridership was more robust, obviously, going through Stoughton. But we'll see what happens with this. I, I think it's going to be more popular than people think, but it doesn't start the first day with every parking place full, so we'll monitor it.
Right. And can you, can you just elaborate a little bit how that's determined, the ridership?
Yeah, so there's a giant black box that the central transportation planning people have, and they look at data, Serpide provides data, they get data from the cities, and they put it in, and they have, they have all these algorithms that spit out how many people, of all the ridership, who's going to depart from what area, who's going to commute back and forth, and then how many of those are within, say, a quarter mile that would probably walk instead of drive? Ride their bike unless it's inclement weather, and how many have available bus access? And all of that goes into the algorithm, and what it spits out is a ridership number. It's not engraved in stone, it is an estimate, but it is a fairly scientific estimate, and it's applied consistently for every single station.
Perfect. And just my other question before I turn it over to Counselor Dion, just in terms of the traffic study and the flow going in here with the 240 vehicles in here, obviously it's not all at the same time, it might be different times during the day and things of that nature. What are we looking for in terms of impacts on, on the traffic itself, based on Deval Street as it currently exists now?
Right. You'll see impact at peak periods, there's no question, and not everybody's going to get on the same train, to your point. And that's why we've been working so closely with the Route 79. So that ultimately, when that road is in place, we'll have good traffic flow and pedestrian. See, one of the problems here in this area is you don't have always good pedestrian access across the roadway.
Right.
And so that's going to be vastly improved with Route 79.
Perfect.
Okay?
Yep, no, that's great, thank you. Counselor Dion?
Yes, hi, thank you. Now, with the waterfront development, is there going to be a satellite station near Battleship Cove?
Not in phase one. There is nothing, phase one, the Battleship Cove Station was always viewed as a parking or kiss-and-ride. It never had parking, because it was right near the Punt de Delgado. And it was viewed primarily as a seasonal station, which would still be great, it's just not in the budget right now. I think, you know, ideally, we'd love to see Battleship Cove just boom, you've got the museum down there, you've got all the Narrows, all this stuff that nobody's going to right now, but they will. And then so someday, having Battleship Cove come online might be a real boon for the city. But again, where it was viewed as seasonal and doesn't have parking, it just, it didn't, it didn't make it. It was determined by the secretary, actually, that, you know, it's something, we are a commuter rail, not a tourist rail, or, you know, so that's kind of where the thinking was. That's, we still have a design.
And I guess it really wouldn't make sense to even consider that without the waterfront development plan becoming a reality first anyways.
Right. And so I've been told, and maybe you can clarify for me, but I've been told that that area near Battleship Cove is transitioning. So there, there are more people living down there than when we did our initial studies, for example, who might take a train. When we did the initial studies, that was not the case.
Well, that was going to?
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I'm, I'm looking to you for that kind of?
Well, that was going to be, that was going to be my next comment or question, was, you know, ridership was determined by Fall River as it exists, not taking into consideration the expansion on the waterfront, or necessarily the migration of people coming south from, you know, Boston and that area.
I, I do think it took in a little bit about the reciprocal traffic, but you're right, the other changes, it does not. And things have changed, and we, like I said, we started this 30 years ago, but more recently, say, the last decade, we really looked seriously at this. Actually, it began with Christina Egan back in 2007, when it started, we really got this going again. All of that stuff was studied, but it's 2020, it's 2021 now, so it's still, things change, they're not stagnant, they're dynamic, which is a good thing, but it?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, no, I do.
No, I do, I do. Finish.
No, I just want to say that we have to be vigilant. We have to watch to make sure that, you know, if, if needs change, we can pivot.
Yep, because my, what you triggered another thought, um, because the housing stock that is going to be in the waterfront uh urban renewal plan at this point, we don't even know if it's ultimately going to be a low, medium or high density um housing market. Because it could be either or. So the higher the density, the more people that would be living down there, and those are people who aren't living in Fall River now. Um, so again, that's another impact. Um.
Okay.
So yeah, just another thought on that, that, I mean, it'd be great if Fall River gets to the point where it needed that satellite station.
Mm-hmm. Yep, it would. I, I mean, I think when you get Route seventy-nine done and you get South Coast Rail, it's going to be transformational for Fall River. I don't think there's any question about it. Uh, on top of the fact that you've already done all the work with the Braga Bridge and the spaghetti ramps, boy, those spaghetti ramps were scary. Um, you know, I mean, a lot of good stuff has happened in the city and I think it's, it, I think you're going to see a lot of interest in the city, so it may change things.
Now, um, you have the layover and you have the actual station on Pierce Street, correct?
The layover is off North Main.
Right, and the, and the station is Pierce and, and Deval?
Deval, yeah, yeah.
So that, Pierce and Deval is the only place that people will be able to board the, the train? Can they potentially get off down further, down north near the layover station?
No, the, the station is the station, but um again, I, I would suggest that a lot of North Fall River people will likely want to use the Asonet Station. It's just, it's closer, rather than go south, go, go north a little bit further. Um, the other thing that people may want to do, since it's not that far away, is they may want to get in their car and drive to Taunton because they have more train options there. So where only three peak period uh day trains come to Fall River and New Bedford, Taunton's getting six, because that's where they split and go south or north. Um, so from my perspective, because I live in Asonet, I may want to just go to Taunton. Why would, you know, then I, because if I sleep in and I miss the first one, I catch the next one.
And so then, people have options. Yeah, and I guess my last question is, if it were to become a reality and um gold medal became part of the scenario, um, gold medal would be the end of the line, so to speak? It wouldn't go beyond, further south than gold medal?
So gold medal is, would be a spur. It wouldn't be part of South Coast Rail. It would be a spur, which used to exist. Um, that, that could go further south, actually. It could. It could go all the way to the Tiverton Line. But that would be a whole separate, they'd have to do their own analysis, their own environmental review, um, get all that stuff taken care of. And again, I, I think the Irap program through Mass D O T Rail and Transit is the route to take, and I know they've had discussions with them, um, just to get the trucks off the road. Uh, I know there was a concern that if it went any farther south, they didn't want trash and stuff on the trains, but you know, that's, I'm not really privy to all those conversations. I just know that I think the gold medal idea would be great. The Irap grants are, are very generous. There is matching, but I mean, it's not prohibitive. A lot of people take full advantage of those so they can have their siding. And remember, our, our commuter rail trains aren't, aren't really attached to that one, but elsewhere, where there's freight and commuter rail sharing the tracks, you need the siding because the commuter rails take priority over the freight. So they have to get out of the way.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I want to uh thank you folks for uh taking the time and the, and the opportunity to share this. Um, I thought it was a great presentation. Uh, very informative and, and answered a lot of our, our questions that we have, so we're uh looking forward to the uh twenty twenty-three and uh we'll, we'll let it slip a week.
He's giving me a week, guys.
We, we know, we know things can happen, so we'll, we'll give you, we'll give you a, a week, uh, you know, so.
He may even let you be the first one to ride it out of Fall River.
There you go. Just, just make sure we stay on that critical path.
Yep, yep, thank you. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone.
You too.
Thanks. Have a good night. Goodbye.
Have a good evening.
Item number three is a uh resolution to discuss the safety hazard created by limited lighting on public streets. This was tabled on May nineteenth two thousand and twenty. This resolution was originally uh submitted by Council Pereira. Um, I believe the last time we had conversation, there was some discussion, um, I believe about uh some additional questions coming in and I, I think maybe some negotiations of things that were, uh, might be taking place, but I know we had spoke to um Mr. Gallagher about keeping uh Council Pelletier and Council Pereira up to uh day on some of the uh new items that came and um items that came in, in regards to this and that we would get a, we would get an update at some point, so it's on the table for, for discussion, so um.
A motion to lift it from the table?
Yep. If, I was gonna say, if you want to discuss it, we need a motion to lift, so a motion was made by Council Dion, seconded by Councila Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Actually, can we do a roll call? I'm sorry, just to.
Council Dion?
Yes.
Council Pelletier?
Yes.
Chairman Kadim?
Yes. Uh, so we, we were originally supposed to discuss this on uh in, in July, but I, I think at that point, um, Mr. Gallagher wasn't available, so we did push it off, so I did want to get it back on. So Mr. Gallagher, uh, if you wouldn't mind giving us an update and then I'll turn it over to committee members that want to speak to it.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Uh, Happy New Year to everybody. Uh, we don't really get to see everybody. Um, so we negotiated with uh Creed. Um, they um lived up to their part of the bargain. Uh, they agreed to pay to replace um the lighting in the city of fifty-two hundred lights. Uh, we have a contractor that's out there replacing the lights now. We've replaced about eighteen to two thousand lights so far. We've uh come past uh Globe Four Corners. We started at the Tivenan Line and gotten uh to Globe Four Corners. We've also gone up into Stafford Road, Eastern Avenue, Brayton Avenue, um Bedford Street. We've done some of the main drags, Plymouth Avenue. We've done some of those main drags that are, uh, have been completed. Uh, it was still ongoing. Again, it, it's going to take us a little longer, um, just because we're in the winter months uh with snow, rain, wind, uh, some of those that can't go up in bucket trucks, um, but the contractor is moving forward with them. Um, every day, uh, we keep getting them replaced, but Creed has lived up to their part of the bargain. They've gone with their warranty, because we had a ten-year warranty and they are replacing all the lights that went bad, so we're replacing all of the forty-nine watt single uh light. If you were to look at them, they have a three optic light to the bottom of them. They're not bulbs, they're LED lighting, so it's not a bulb. Uh, it's a glass optic with a LED uh piece behind it, a circuit board per se. And um there's fifty-two hundred of them. The bigger ones that are in some intersection and bigger areas are one thirty-nines. We didn't have any issues with those. Uh, them seem to be fine. We are monitoring those, that if we have an issue with those, Creed is willing to step up and take care of those as well, but right now there's no issues with those. Um, I have been getting some, some calls and stuff. I am trying to get back to the people. Uh, I'm trying to ask people to be um patient with us because to take the contractor off of what he's doing to send him in different areas of the city uh is going to slow us down. And uh the last time that we did the lighting uh change over to LED lights, we were able to accomplish it in about three months. This is going to take us a little longer because we're now into the winter months, so be, like I said, with the snow, the rain and the wind uh makes it a little bit longer. Um, if we have any safety concerns, I did send a letter to Council back on October twenty-sixth um explaining um everything that went on, um, that we had come to an agreement with Creed and that if you have anything that may be an emergency in a bad area, um, in a bad crosswalk area, in a, in a blind spot, we will try to get out there to fix them if possible, but we're asking people to be patient so that we can try to get the entire city done in a short amount of time.
Uh, Council Dion?
Yeah, just, um, so the, the new, the new lights, do the new lights come with a new warranty?
Yeah, well, we're going to keep our same warranty. Um, we, we have five years left on our warranty, so we're keeping the same warranty. And we're going to get a few extra lights at the end of it, so we had some ad stock and stuff like that, so if there's something like that that goes on. Um, and again, if this happens again, they're gonna, they're gonna step up to the plate. They know that this was a manufacturer defect. It wasn't anything other than, and they understand that and they, they stood up to it.
Okay, and I'd like to clarify something, because I know the subject of dimmers continues to surface and continues to surface. Now, is it, is it, is it true to say that the dimmers do not exist? If an area still appears to be dim, it's because they haven't gotten there to replace the light yet? It is not a matter of people turning down and turning up the lights?
That is correct. The, at, at, at the very beginning, we were told by the company that we contracted with to install these lights that they were dimmable. That is the next model up from this model. The model itself has the dimming dial in it, but it doesn't do anything. So it is not dimmable. The lights that are dim now is why we're replacing them. They're starting to go bad. Some of them are actually going out now. Um, so that's why we're replacing them and, and the issues we had. So we brought out some engineers, they did some lighting surveys and then they took the lights, started to investigate what was going on with them and they, that's why they lived up to their part of the bargain for the warranty and are replacing all the lights.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, because like I say, that just keeps, seems to come, keep coming up and coming up, so.
Yeah.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Pelletier?
Yeah, well, I'm glad to see that we're getting the situation squared away. Now, you said there was five years into the warranty?
Yes, sir.
So we still had five years to go.
That is correct.
And uh thanks to you, I mean, you've got the company coming back and trying to square this away. I know Linda was on it and I was on it and we were on you and uh we don't need to get you mad, but we just want, we just want to get it done.
That's correct. It seemed, it took us a little while with Creed, you know, they, they it's fifty-two hundred lights, costs quite a bit of money, so they're putting up all of the equipment and paying for all of the labor. Uh, the labor cost was something that there was a little, a little bit of pushback, but ultimately they agreed that they had to do it. Um, and they did it, but it just took a little longer to negotiate with that. And they agreed to it and they understand, once they found out it was a manufacturer's defect, so it just took us a little while to negotiate that.
Is there any cost to the city?
No cost to the city.
No, okay, well, that sounds good. There'll be lights in Fall River, that's good. More lights, you can see what's going on. You can see the beauty parts of Fall River.
You see some, you. Yeah, you could see some areas, you could see the difference. You go to the south end, you can really see the difference of what they should have been or what they were when they first were installed. And now they're so dim, but now you go to the areas where they've been replaced, uh, people are just like, wow, it's a, it's, it's a night and day difference.
So what's the time you wanted to finish?
Uh, like I said, he's at about almost two thousand lights. We have fifty-two hundred of them. He's about into it just about a month now, maybe a little bit longer. Um, but again, that's a, a, a month of doing, when you look at this, we had some storms, we had some rainstorms, windstorms, so he wasn't able to do them. We kind of started this like in November and we're in January, but because of some of the weather we've had, it's just taken a little longer. Hopefully the better weather will be coming after next month and we might be able to get it completed by the end of March.
Right, just curious. How long does it take to straighten one light out?
Um, he's got to take it down. They change out the interiors, the guts of them, and then he puts them back up. It takes about three to five minutes to change the interior of the guts. New drivers, new optics and put the light back up. So what they're doing is they're, they gave us all the drivers, all the optics, we're using the same shell.
Yeah.
He puts, they gave us two hundred brand new lights. He put up two hundred lights, took two hundred old ones down, took them to a shop, revamped them, brought them back out, put two hundred up, take two hundred down at a time is what he's doing.
All right, it probably take three minutes to do it, but time-wise, what's it take? But what the code from?
Well, normally it would have taken him three months to do it, but it, it's a little bit longer. It would have taken him three months to do fifty-two hundred lights, but it's going to be a little bit longer. We're in the winter months.
Yeah, okay, no problem. Good job. Are you?
All right, he, he asked the two questions, the most important questions that I had. Was there any cost to the city and uh time to complete? So we got those answered. Um, any other conversation, discussion? Seeing none is, uh, what's the committee's desire? Do you want to do a motion to uh grant leave to withdraw or do you want to table it upon completion?
I, I, I just soon table it. When they get done, let them come to us and say, hey, we're all done. I feel a lot better.
Okay, uh, so the, the motion's made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Dion. Uh, discussion on the motion, seeing none. Uh, so Chris, if you wouldn't minds, uh, when we're getting to the phase of wrapping up and being completed, if you can just really send a uh, a notice to, to Cat so that we can uh get a meeting together, just.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll keep you informed. Like I sent you an email, like I said, back in October, once we came to the agreement. Uh, it seems that the emails are a, a little difficult to, to get, so I'll make sure that I'll, I'll keep Cat informed, so probably every month from here on. Now, I won't wait till the closing, so by the end of the month, beginning of next month, I'll give you another update. How many lights we've accomplished, where we've accomplished it, and I'll do that on a month-to-month basis all the way to the end.
And if you can just make sure that the entire council's uh kept up on those emails, just, just because I know there were a couple of the councils that were in, um, were interested in this matter, so just in case uh for whatever reason, it's not getting to them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring it right to Cat because I've sent it and I've sent it to Council, I've sent it to individual and for some reason you weren't getting the emails. So Cat was, uh, found the email and tried to pass it along to you guys, so I'll make sure that I bring it, I'll send it and then I'll make sure I bring a copy to Cat to make sure you guys get it.
Appreciate it. Uh, so the motion on the table, um, Madam Clerk, will you just please call the roll?
On the motion to table, Council Dion?
Yes.
Council Pelletier? Chairman Kadim?
Yes. Item number four is a resolution uh to this, uh, for the administration to work with uh Oak Grove Cemetery to return historic and sacred items uh to their cemetery sites. This was tabled on May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. The original resolution was submitted by Council Pereira. Um, we did meet back and, uh, some of the information that we had, that there was a hundred and sixty-five flower boxes and sixteen urns that were removed and not tagged or catalogs, uh, so there was no way to be certain of their original location. Um, they're presently being stored at the Bullock Street location and possibly the uh public would be allowed to enter the location and identify their property. Um, Director Pirano stated that there were some discussions with the Park Board, so we were waiting for him to to really have another uh discussion with the Park Board and come back to us uh so that we can discuss this matter, matter a little further in terms of any type of guidelines that might need to be established and enforcedments uh with things around this, this matter, so uh, is there a motion to lift from the table?
Motion to lift from the table?
Motion was made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Dion. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Uh, the motion to lift from the table, Council Dion?
Yes.
Council Pelletier?
Yes.
And Chairman Kadim?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Brown, have you had any conversations with the Park Board? Can you give us any updates as to where we stand, if there's any, any updates on this?
Yes, absolutely. So we've, we've allowed the public to come down to Bullock Street and claim um any of the urns that they'd like to take back into their possession, um, and that's still the case, so if any of the public would like to come down to the office, we're there seven to three, Monday through Friday, and we'd be happy to help them claim their property um and take it back. As far as um incorporating them back into the cemetery, we're in the process of working with um a landscape architect who specializes in historic cemeteries um to design an expansion and we've asked him to create um some type of uh way to utilize these urns that aren't claimed to put them back in the cemetery, so um, that's something the Park Board was interested in and we're working with that landscape architect to do.
Great. Um, any, is there a timeline on, on the, I guess that, the drawings or conceptual drawings or whatever it is that you're going to be getting from the landscape architect?
Yeah, so I, I spoke with him again today. Um, I believe we have a public hearing scheduled uh through the Park Board for February third in which he's going to present his uh design ideas. Um, the general layout is, is um established, um, and what he and I have discussed is creating some type of uh focal point surrounding those planters, um, in which the, the cemetery would continue to plant um on an annual basis in those planters. So he's working on those conceptual designs, so we're hoping for that February third meeting, we would have um his ideas and proposals.
Great, thank you. Uh, discussion, committee members? Council Pelletier?
How many uh grave sites are involved in this?
So I believe it, the, the count of the urns that are still on Bullock is somewhere around a hundred urns.
Now, do we, do we know which plots they are? We know that, right?
Um, they are not catalogued, so we don't know where the, the urns that we have on Bullock Street, we do not know where they were previously.
But you've got a hundred, you know uh that the stuff come off. And what I'm trying to say is, if you know the hundred places, could you guys notify the family? Listen, uh, if you want to come down and see if we could straighten this out, there's only a hundred. So is that something you're looking into?
So the, the urns that we have left, we don't know where they go. We don't know where they were um previous. So the, the urns that we have left, we don't know where they go. We don't know where they were, um, previous to their removal. There were, uh, a, a greater number of urns as far as, uh, my understanding. Mr. Perry might be able to speak to it more because I wasn't with the, the city or the cemetery at that point. Um, they might have been claimed or, or, um, addressed with the families at that point.
So Counselor, Counselor, to answer your question, when, when the urns were removed, um, they were not catalogued, unfortunately. So we, you know, they weren't marked, uh, grave site, um, identification, family name, any of that. Um, they were all stored in one location. We did offer up the opportunity for the public to come in, as Mr. Pirano said, that, that offer is still on the table. If somebody can come in and identify the urn uh, as being theirs and belongs in a certain place, we would obviously help them with that. Um, what was left was the fact that we had all of these urns to store and figure out what we were gonna do. Um, trying to get them back in the cemetery didn't, wasn't feasible. Trying to figure out where they went, we weren't gonna, we couldn't just pick random grave sites and put them back, which is why Chris and I, uh, began to discuss incorporating them into this new expansion project, uh, to kind of marry the old to the new. Uh, so we're expanding the cemetery, but it is a historic cemetery. It is, it is a beautiful cemetery. So we want to kind of marry that old-school feel with the planters and the boxes, um, to that new style of cemetery layout.
But you know there's a hundred. You know which ones they are.
Well, no, we don't know where the hundred went. We know we have a hundred, but we do not know the, we cannot identify where they were originally taken.
How'd you come up with a hundred?
Well, that's what's left. That's physically what we can count as far as urns that, and, and boxes that are left on Bullock Street.
All right. Well, I guess it's a tough situation. I guess if the families don't know about it, well, I guess it's it's not all right, but if they want to do something, well, it's up to them, I guess.
So I think Counsel, just, just to interrupt, I, I think a lot of them were also kind of, uh, very similar. So it was kind of tough to identify which grave sites they were on, right?
That, that's correct, uh, Counsel Kadim. Um, that, that, that was a very tough part. So there are only so many companies that make these urns, especially back then, uh, so they really all mirror one another. So even if a family was to come in and try to identify one, uh, it'd be tough to distinguish one from the other. Um, Counsel, I think you might be thinking that we know where these hundred go, uh, which is not the case. Um, unfortunately, we're left with a, 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 a certain amount of urns stored on Bullock Street. Um, I will say this as well, this might help you understand, like you said, you know, if the families are around still or if they know. Uh, unfortunately, I think a lot of these urns, uh, are really old, uh, and there's not a lot of family members left. When we initially put out the, the offer for family members to come in and try to identify them, and Chris could speak to that because he's there each day, I think we only had less than a handful. Uh, maybe two or three people who actually came in and said, yes, you know, that was um, an urn that was on my, my family's plot. Other than that, there really wasn't a lot of interest. We put it out there again. We've discussed it at park board meetings openly. Um, and we still haven't had anybody else come back, which, eh, you know, is unfortunate. Uh, but we can't go back and, and rewind the clock, as they say. Um, but we do think it's very important that we take these urns, we return them to the cemetery in a, in a way, um, that's gonna honor that. And as Chris said, I mean, these urns, when they were originally put there, they were planted flowers in them every year. That, that hadn't happened in God knows how many decades. Uh, but with this new plan that we'd like to have incorporating them, it'll be perpetuals that we, we put in every, every spring. Uh, so that we'll, we'll be planting them and beautify the cemetery quite some bit, I would think.
So how long do you think before we put this to rest?
Well, we're in the process of the design, um, for that expansion area now. Uh, and we really are getting tight with room in the cemetery. So we need to move that expansion project along quite quickly. Um, so we're, we're on the fast track now to trying to get this project really going. As Chris said, the public hearing for it is, is, is in February. Um, that'd be our first park board meeting in February, and it is on the agenda. Um, Stock Architects, um, i- i- is gonna attend so that we can talk about, you know, the design, uh, and conceptual drawings. I'm sorry, it wouldn't be Stock, um, but
Austin Surveying Group.
Thank you. Yes, Chris. I appreciate that. Um, so the, the architect is gonna come, discuss that project. Park Board is on board with, with moving forward. Uh, so really now we're at the formality part of things where there are certain things we need to do, um, by ordinance and, and by law to, to move the project along, and we're at that stage now. So hopefully we'll be moving along soon.
Okay. Keep up the good work. Are you? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Dion?
I just have one question. So families who are able to identify and claim, um, any of the, any of the artifacts that were removed, do they have the option to return them to where they were originally? Or make them part of the expansion project if they choose to do so?
So, um, that's an interesting question, Counselor, uh, because I'm not sure, you know, it, it got lost in the actual act of, of, and, and how this took place, but the intent of removing them was because they were causing us issues with maintenance of the cemetery years ago. We didn't cut the cemetery with the type of machines we cut them with now, when these urns were first put there. You know, the mowers and, and whatever they used to cut them back then, uh, they may have used those little hand-push ones uh, that my uncle made me use when I was a little kid. Uh, but at the end of the day.
Sickles.
Yeah, exactly, you know, so, but, but the, the layout and, and the way that things were done years ago are much different now. So what was happening was our guys were going through, trying to cut the rows, and we were, we were blowing tires, we were damaging the equipment and whatnot. Now, that's why the decision was made to pull them out. How that it was gone about, the being done is, is what was debatable. Um, but it happened. So to put them back in, I think we just get ourselves back into the situation we were before. But if a family member would come and wanted to identify that, you know what? We could probably work with them and, and figure out, again, the final decision on how we incorporate these hasn't been made. Uh, so if it was something where a family member, you know, we wanted to put maybe a little plaque on it or, or something, uh, that might be something we could consider. But again, just remember, anything that we do do in that sense, we'd have to present to the park board. So if the park board was okay with that, uh, and they felt that, you know, that wouldn't, um, take away from the aesthetic of the expansion, then we'd be more than willing to work with the families to, to come to a resolution that everybody can accept.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Uh, just one general question. In, in terms of what really led us here, I mean, there were some, um, policies and procedures or guidelines or requirements in terms of where these things could be put, uh, in place. I know originally we had discussed, uh, about the park board having some conversation about the guidelines. Uh, do you have, can you give us any updates as to, uh, has anything changed? Uh, have they been reviewed? Uh, because I know, I think, Mr. Pirano, you had mentioned that that was your hope to, uh, go back to the, uh, to the board, um, and really kind of just have a, a, a discussion on how, how we can really try to either streamline, uh, the requirements that we hear or really kind of educate, i- if that was the guidelines that we were gonna continue to use, how to educate the, uh, the folks that are, that are, um, you know, visiting the cemetery and, and trying to, I guess, decorate, um, those plots. Can you, can you update us on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, I've taken the time to research, um, various other cemeteries in Massachusetts, both privately run and municipally run, um, and kind of adopt our rules to be more in line with them. Uh, the main goal was taking the existing rules we had in place and making them more black and white, so there wasn't any gray area, being very explicit about what type of, uh, adornments are allowed and what are not. And then also, um, the ways in which, um, the cemetery staff would go about, um, correcting any type of violation. Um, going so far as saying that they would be, um, you know, certain items would be removed without notice because they were serious safety concerns versus, you know, something that would be removed with notice, uh, and stored until claimed. Um, so things like that. That was presented to the board. I don't remember the exact month, but it was before the holidays. Um, and they referred it to Corporation Council, who has gone through all of the rules and regulations that I put together, um, and agrees with them. There were some minor formatting, uh, changes that needed to be made. Um, and that will be going back to the board for, uh, approval and or, um, discussions and modifications, um, in the next, uh, meeting or so.
Great, thank you. Uh, any other discussion? Comments? So it seems like, uh, you know, the, the issue seems to be, uh, resolved from, from my standpoint. I know we still have a number of, um, artifacts that are really kind of unclaimed right now, but it seems like, uh, those folks have a good handle and the, uh, park board is, uh, addressing the, um, you know, the underlying issues with the rules and regulations. So I think everybody recognizes it. So what is the committee's, um, desire on this item?
Make a motion if everybody's comfortable with it, for leave to withdraw.
There's a motion, grant leave to withdraw, that was made by Counsel Dion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Pelletier. Just, um, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
On granting the item leave to withdraw, Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counsel Pelletier?
Uh, yes.
Chairman Kadim?
Yes. Motion passes. Uh, gentlemen, I want to thank you for, uh, your due diligence on this matter. I know it was, uh, it was a touchy subject, but I think, um, you know, I think you folks have handled it pretty well, uh, with the aftermath that you were, you were left with, and uh, hopefully we can kind of make sure that this doesn't, uh, happen in the future again. And, um, if, if we get to the point, I think, based on your rules and regulations, which I haven't seen, but I, I have faith in Mr. Pirano, uh, with the, the type of work that he's put forth, I will be able to address it. So, uh, with that, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilors.
Thank you.
Good night.
You too. Uh, item number five are minutes from, or minutes from July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty. Uh, motion to, uh, approve was made by Counsel Dion. Yep, and seconded by Counsel Pelletier?
Yes.
All right. I'm gonna take your silence as a yes. I, I can hear you now. Yes, yeah. Uh, I was just waiting. Um, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Um, to approve the minutes of July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counsel Pelletier?
Yes.
Chairman Kadim?
Yes. Item number six of the minutes for September twenty-second, two thousand twenty. Motion to approve was made by Counsel Dion, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Uh, discussion, Counsel Pelletier?
No, I'll say, yeah.
Oh, okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Uh, to approve the minutes of September twenty-second, two thousand twenty, Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counsel Pelletier?
Yes.
Chairman Kadim?
Yes. Seeing that there's no more business before the, uh, Committee on Public Works and Transportation, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn was made by Counsel Pelletier, seconded by Counsel Dion. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
On the motion to adjourn, Counselor Dion?
Yes.
Counsel Pelletier?
Yes.
And Chairman Kadim?
Yes. Um, the, uh, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. And, uh, Kat, thank you for, uh, working with, uh, South Coast Rail, trying to get this set up for us. I appreciate it. All right.